Hey Minot, 2020 is the year for more. Yes, it's the US Census season and with it, Minot could see more. More opportunities for business, more federal funding for roads, for our schools, and for our community. Take part in something more. Take the census, because for us, more means more. Visit minotnd.org to learn more.
We'll call the meeting of the Minot City Council to order for today, Monday, June 1st, 2020. It is 5:30 in the afternoon. I do want to appreciate everyone that is for the council who is here and then also city staff and those tuning in at home, that this will be our final closed city council meeting for COVID-19 respectively. Is nothing significant changes, the 15th will be reopening for our regular meetings, for open meetings, which is, I think, a good thing for everyone concerned. Roll call, please.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pitner.
Here.
Padragula.
Here.
Straight.
Here.
Wolski.
Here.
Sitma.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Number three on our agenda is the mayor's report. I do have a couple of slides to go through here on this and go ahead and get that queued up and I think we're right at the end, Derek. Maybe let's start at the beginning. There we go. All right. There we go. Starting off on May 5th, I did have a closing for one of our flood home acquisitions, also had a joint information press briefing on the 5th as well. A number of items on the 6th, the CTR-NDR planning and legislative conference call on the 7th, the Department of Commerce briefing, then the Suris River Joint Board Meeting that was also done on a conference call. On the 8th, COVID-19 Task Force Meeting and CTE-NDR Program Follow-Up. On the 11th, we did have a Task Force 21 Meeting by phone as well, joint information press briefing on the 12th. I did meet with the Chief of Staff of the United States Air Force, General David Goldfein at Minot Air Force Base along with Alderman Janser. On the 14th, we did have a pre-briefing on that as well. We had a good discussion with General Goldfein about the different activities at Minot Air Force Base and the community itself that were able to really stem the growth of COVID within our community and also at Minot Air Force Base, which the Air Force and the rest of Global Strike Command had taken notice of. So hopefully more good things to come out of that meeting in the future. On the 14th, MACC Board Meeting and another COVID Task Force Meeting on the 15th, as you can see, there was quite a few different activities. I did not put the picture of my wife's car with the graduation congratulatory's on there, but on the 17th, we did, after an invitation, go through the parade with Nedros to congratulate the seniors who were all lined up socially separated out in front of Nedros School just on the east side of Minot, so I want to say congratulations to all of the seniors there. The special city council meeting on the 18th, it did go out and attend for the B-52 flyover honoring the healthcare and essential workers. As you can see, one of the smaller pictures there that our staff posed for up on North Hill, spectacular picture, but I want to say thank you more so to Minot Air Force Base and to the personnel that took the time to fly around North Dakota, not just Minot, but Bismarck, Fargo, and Grand Forks. The 19th was another press briefing. We did have an interim water topics committee planning meeting on the 20th, also an organizational structure conference call on the 20th with Alderman Janser and Alderman Pitner. We'll have more on that after a bit. The 21st, WDA-DEA Gross Production Oil Forecasting Conference Call that had to do with projections dealing with oil revenues across North Dakota and some of the folks in the specialties in North Dakota with their projections on what that might look like over the next 12, 24, and 36 months. The 21st was the Governor's Office Conference Call regarding COVID-19 Emergency Operations Planning Meeting on the 21st and another Task Force Meeting there as well. On the 22nd was the State Economic Outlook Forecast Webinar. The 26th was the JIC Press Briefing. The 27th, CTE Follow-Up Meeting on the 29th, then the IEDC Steering Committee, and then the 30th and 31st Planning and Discussion Regarding George Floyd Vigil and BLM Rally at Oak Park. I do want to take a moment to say thank you to all of the organizers of the rally and to those who attended. We got to see what some of the best when it comes to exactly how important it is to our community to recognize what is going on around the nation, but also to do it peacefully and respectfully, and I'm very much appreciative of everyone who organized it, who attended it, and also for all of our staff that were working through that process during that as well. Aside from that, there were more phone calls, emails, social media, and staff interactions than I could probably count for a number on there, aside from a number of other direct personal calls for many other items. I do also want to just again remind everyone that the 15th is the target date that we are going to reopen, that is the next city council meeting, so we will anticipate to have folks coming into City Hall for what we see here in the audience with our chair situation. We are also going to remain and have that portal open for comments on our city website for those folks who may not feel comfortable coming to City Hall yet, that they will have an opportunity to submit those comments, suggestions, or ideas through our portal. And for anyone watching at home, that is minotnd.org, and there's a link there to submit for those comments. I would stand for any questions from my lengthy report, and I do have one mayoral appointment if we don't have any questions or comments. Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I move your appointment.
Motion by Alderman Janser for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pitner.
Yes.
Padragula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolski.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes, motion approved. That is the end of item three, on to item four, city managers' report. Mr. Lakefield, do you need the clicker that I have here in my hand? Okay. Might be a little bit easier. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. We'll try and keep things moving right along. We have a lot of business on the agenda tonight, so we'll go through this relatively quickly. Some of the important dates that you have on here, a couple of these that we want to point out. Later in the week, we're meeting with our legislative delegation in a series of meetings. We're taking half of them on Wednesday and half on Thursday to sit down and discuss some of the upcoming needs and our approach to the upcoming session. I think we all know that it's probably going to be a difficult legislative session going forward, and we just wanted to meet with them to start discussing our strategy for that coming up. Interim Water Topics Committee is also Thursday afternoon, and we've already received correspondence and submitted a response to them. They're already asking for ways that we can cut back on our allocation of funds for the State Water Commission, so we're working with them to come up with a plan that will have the least impact on the projects that we have underway. Suris River Joint Board, and then of course, the June election. It's also the city election, so hopefully everyone has received their ballots and got those sent in in the mail. Again, this is an all-mail-in ballot, so we still have lots of questions, when the cutoff date is going to be for processing ballots. You know, typically, our canvassing board has a specific date, six days after the election, and, you know, are we going to have all of those ballots back by then? So lots of questions, but we're working through that with the county auditor's office. So we have the next city council meeting on June 15th, a series of other meetings later in the month, and then of course, at the end of the month on the 23rd, the city council reorganization meeting. Budget, we are in the middle of the budget process right now. Our initial deadline for submitting budgets from departments was noon last Friday, so we've received a bunch of those through the process. We're still working on our scenarios for employee costs and what those might look like, and we have devised a number of scenarios for our planning, so we're working through that. We're working on compiling all of the data and updating our revenue forecasts, of course, and we're still very early in that process, so we don't have a lot of really solid data to work on. So as we compile all of this, then we'll start the painful process of trying to pare back and decide what's going to make the cut and what's not going to make the cut. Again, I think it's important to look at our budget priorities. Of course, maintaining compliance with regulatory and safety requirements is a top priority. Responsive, responsible city government, I think in the light of the world's events recently, that is probably an utmost importance. Investing in human capital by retaining current workforce and attracting committed long-term employees, this is an initiative that's been underway for a few years and we've seen some success. And of course, we don't want to give up on that, we want to keep that momentum that we have in that regard and leverage the investment that's already been made in that. Well-planned and well-maintained city infrastructure and prioritizing maintenance of existing assets before investing in additional assets. And we've seen this time and time again where this is important. We have some deferred maintenance issues on some existing assets and streets and pavement is something that has been in front of the council a number of different times, and we continue to look at the best ways to resolve some of that backlog and how we're going to approach that and at least not give up any ground. We want to at least maintain the status quo, and that's going to be a challenge with the revenue environment that we were in. Excuse me. Leveraging the investment in technology to improve the availability of information and improve transparency with the projects that we have, the initiatives with the new software systems. We're already starting to see some of this as we bring these systems online, that information will be available not only to us internally, members of the council, and also members of the public, and providing that information in a format that is probably a little bit more easily understood by a layperson. Sometimes our annual reports, and they're required, you know, by regulatory requirements to be presented in a certain fashion, and sometimes that doesn't translate into an easily understood report. So hopefully by being able to have some graphs and other types of things, we'll be able to lay that information out where you can take a look at it and the average person can understand, you know, if green means good and red means bad, it makes things a little bit easier to interpret. We need to reward the conservation of resources and effective budget management. The 2021 budget is not where we're expending all of our energy. We've continually been reminding departments that we need to be good stewards of the 2020 budget as well, and some of that money, if we can save money in the current budget, that relieves a little bit of pressure in the upcoming budget. So we're remaining aware that we need to manage our pennies in this year's budget as well. And continuing to advance long-term projects critical to our community, NAS, flood control, potential eventual landfill expansion, a number of these items we have on our radar. They're all large, expensive projects, they're very important. Unfortunately, the funding is an important part of these, and we're looking at all the different options, including, you know, long-term funding sources or bonding scenarios. And then continuing to expand long-term planning efforts. We want to keep our focus on the long-term. Obviously, you know, if we'd have looked at our five-year or 10-year plan six months ago, it looks a lot different than our five-year and 10-year plan does today, but we need to make those adjustments and prioritize what we have to have in the short term, what can be pushed out a little bit longer, and there may be some projects that just may not develop on account of this. So we continue to evaluate that and make adjustments as necessary. So on our timeline, like I said, the first round of budgets were due last Friday. We have also budget request forms from other agencies that the city provides funding for, such as First District, Commission on Aging, those types of things. Those responses are due June 12th. Our annual pay plan presentation is scheduled for 10:00 AM on June 15th, and then our first budget workshop on June 23rd. Now initially, our vision was for this budget workshop was, you know, we're going to go back and reinforce some of the ideas that have been presented in the past and, you know, a little bit of an education piece for some of the new council members, and I'm just guessing right now, a big part of our focus is going to be on the revenue piece of our budget going forward. Again, the timeline here, the middle of June, we meet with department heads, and this is where we sift through everything and decide, you know, what can we live without? What do we have to have? And some of these items, you know, we're about 18 months ahead of time, some of the repairs, things like that, it's a guess. I mean, we have to, we have to come up with a number and manage to that number. You know, the risk is if we shoot too low, then we have to come back and have budget amendments and those types of things, or we could be in a position where we find ourselves without funding for something that is important later on. So we'll work through that to decide what's going to stay and what's going to be in the budget that gets presented to the council. July, the first part of July, we work on the budget, come up with a number. Of course, our end goal here is we don't want to see any impact on property taxes, so that's, we're kind of working backwards a little bit to get to that. So we're confident that we're going to get there, and we'll work our hardest to make that happen. And then July 27th, we hope to have the budget ready to copy and bind because it'll be presented here to council on August 3rd. This is the latest results of our sales tax collections, and the bold line that jumps out at you is the 2020 collections. Now, this looks more like a bad EKG than any type of financial report, but as you can see from the historical lines, these collections are all over the place. So the point that I have with including this is, we really don't have a definitive projection based on this historical data. We anticipate that sales tax collections are going to be down, but after we see another month or so, if we see that lower line kind of flatten out at the bottom of the screen, we're going to have an idea of exactly where we're going to be. My guess is this will bounce up a little bit in the next month, and it's just a matter of how volatile it is after that. Our initial number that we're using for budgeting purposes is 8.5 million per penny. Last year, our budget was 10 million, and we collected about 11.4. So that's about a 25% decrease compared to where we were with actual numbers last year. So hopefully, we're going to be right in the ballpark, and again, that's going to be one of those numbers that as we get a little further along in the budget process, you know, we may have to trim that a little bit more, or we may decide that we're pretty confident with our 8.5 million number. I should, before I move on, I should point out too that I looked at making a graph for Hub City collections as well, but with the changes coming in late or mid-year last year, there wouldn't have been much value in looking at that. The first couple of months of 2020 looked really good and has tailed off. I expect that those numbers are going to pretty much level off with the last month's collections because of the way the buckets fill in that revenue stream. So West Dakota Energy Association has been fairly consistent with their forecasts for that, and it looks like the actual numbers that we've seen are going to be right in line with that. So we're confident that that is kind of already bottomed out, but we'll continue to evaluate that. Construction, if you've been around town, you've noticed a lot going on. If you go north over the Broadway Bridge, you can see all of the dirt piled up on the east side of the bridge. We have some pictures here. I guess we'll skip back and talk about the 31st Avenue reconstruction first. If you can see in the background here, right underneath the C and the O, you can see Mr. Meyer is here overseeing the first pour of concrete in the 31st Avenue Roundabout, and this junior engineer that he has is his oldest son. So he's out there on the job training from kindergarten, watching a concrete pour, and with both his parents being engineers, he probably is going to be not too far behind in their footsteps. So we did have some extra supervision that day. 31st Avenue Construction's moving along, and some of the aerial photos that I've seen now, actually the circle, you can see it, and it's very defined, you can see what it's starting to look like. They're making good progress, and it says it's on schedule. The underground work is completed, so they're pouring concrete and moving ahead. 10th Street Storm Sewer, I haven't been out that way for a while, but I know that they're underway. They're going to have the intersection closed, but there will be access here as it's outlined on the slide. Sewer pipes are being installed and asphalt milling began in the middle of the month. Here's the flood control project, some of the photos. It shows here in the bottom photo, they were installing the stop logs in one of the openings near Broadway. They also had the stop logs in on the opening near the Ann Street Bridge and tested those to make sure that they work. Like I said earlier, the dirt piled up right next to the bridge, going to where the start of the flood wall is, it's really starting to take shape and getting to be pretty impressive. And of course, construction on the pump station across the street from there. MI-23, recent completion, the final sections of exploration and seepage trench. They're working on the concrete along 7th Avenue and 16th Street. I did see a slide in the last day or two, the first row of blocks along the pedestrian path underneath the bridge are installed, it's starting to take shape, and you can see what it looks like. The Weed Links parking lot's been graded and started with the gravel base, and then the water main completions, and they're working on the pedestrian path. The bottom picture here is the pump station over by Weed Links there, right after, off of 6th. here is the pump station over by Weed Links there, right after, off of 2nd Avenue. Maple diversion, of course, we have the chief's report signed. Senator Hovind had included this project in the Water Infrastructure Bill for federal authorization. It's about 35% designed, and actually, there's an agenda item on tonight's agenda dealing with the plans and specs for this phase of flood control. Traffic signal cabinet switchovers. Some of the hardware in these traffic signal cabinets was ancient, and we had been scavenging parts from not only other cabinets that had been replaced here in the city, but all over the country, wherever we could find parts to make these things work. So now they're getting some new brains in these cabinets, and it'll allow the engineers to communicate with these traffic signals. So that work is underway. We're going to have some flaggers, portable stop signs to control traffic while they're making that switchover. The return to work plan, and this has been a hot topic. I had to run out and run an errand this afternoon and coming down Broadway. It's apparent that traffic has increased. I mean, it's compared to where it was a month or so ago, so I think that's a healthy sign that people are starting to return to their normal commitments and habits. The city here, we are working to get everybody back to a normal schedule. Initially, we had targeted June 1st for that, and with the testing results that we had here a week or so ago, we pushed that back. We also had another mass testing late last week, and I just found out today from the police chief that all of those tests were negative. We did get those results back today, so that's a good sign. We're looking for return of staff here, and we have a number of them that have already returned and really start phasing things in here in the next week or two. And then the reopening of the buildings is scheduled for June 15th. So we're anticipating, unless something changes between now and then, that the buildings will be open for the next council meeting. And of course, I think we've all agreed to continue with the portals and things like that. If people should want to participate or, you know, feel the need to call in instead of being here in person, we'd accommodate that as much as we can. The police department and fire department have their own schedules and are still going to have some limited access to buildings, those types of things, because when they have such close proximity, any exposure there can spread quickly and decimate our ability to respond to calls. NDR, we have a lot going on there. We're going to hit some of the highlights. One of the first things that we will throw up here is John Zakian has announced to us that he is moving on to greener pastures or at least warmer areas of the country. He's moving on to work with the state of Texas and will be leaving us after June 19th. So some of the things we have going on, of course, we have, are applying for an extension for the NDR grant. We'll see if we're successful with that. Right now, we're still planning on moving on with the current timeline, but with everything that has happened, we're optimistic and hopeful that we'll see some extension of the time requirements for that. And it's my understanding that we are ahead of some of the other grantees as far as our progress with these grants. So hopefully, there'll be some support from some of the other large grantees, and we'll get that pushed off a little bit. City Hall relocation, of course, is one of the NDR projects, is undergoing environmental review as we speak, and the Family Homeless Shelter is anticipating bids later this month. Hazardous waste collection was rescheduled from earlier this spring. It's now slated for June 19th and 20th at Public Works Building, and this has been very successful in the past, so we're hopeful that we'll have a good turnout with this again. The last thing that I had is just thank you again for allowing me to be here. I did send an email around this morning in regards to some of the work that was done over the weekend here, and I did leave somebody out unintentionally, and that was Deanna at the airport was instrumental with her assistance as well, and I didn't want her to be slighted, but everyone that was involved, and there's other people behind the scenes, too, but they all did a great job, and things went off exactly as we hoped, so things went well. And I guess I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Any questions? Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. Mr. Lakefield, looking for an update on our HR and city manager search. And I know in the past, I'm not even perfectly sure what direction we gave you guys, but would be happy to hear an update. I've kind of expected to maybe see it on an agenda or...
We're still looking for firms.
Okay.
I would bring those down.
Gotcha. Okay.
So for the people at home, we're still looking for the firm, just in case they couldn't hear her, that is going to begin that search. Any other questions for Mr. Lakefield? Thank you, sir. That takes us to our next agenda item, and that is number five, and this is the city attorney's report. Madam city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I submitted a written report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our city attorney? Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is item six, which is our consent items 6.1 through 6.16. Are there any individual items within our consent agenda items that need to be pulled for individual discussion? Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Sitma, I would request we pull item 6.4, 6.11, and 6.16.
Item 6.4, 6.11, and 6.16. Any other items? If not, I would look for a motion.
Move consent on the remaining items.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Pittner to move the remaining items. Second by Alderman Janser. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfsky?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion approved. 6.4 is the gaming site authorization. The Aggie Foundation, the site approval by the city council is required as a precondition to obtain a state game of chance license. Each organization submits documentation annually or in order to conduct game of chance at locations throughout the city of Minot. The recommendation before the council is to approve the gaming site authorization for the Aggie Foundation to install electronic dispensing devices at the Quality Inn in Suites. This is 3916 North Broadway.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser. Discussion, Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. I have made a point to try and be consistent in opposing these recently. Obviously, this application is in, but I think, I think we've reached a point where it's appropriate to take a step back from these automatic authorizations and evaluate this practice of charitable gaming to ensure that it's achieving the goals for the community that, that we want. So for that reason, I'm going to be opposing this tonight and hoping that at some point in the future, we, we maybe implement a moratorium and take this topic up in greater detail.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
No.
Wolfsky?
No.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion approved. That takes us to 6.11. This is the library extension, I'm sorry, library exterior budget amendment. The council approved the award of bid to Minot Public Library's exterior renovation project. This is Project LIB 035. That was March 2nd, 2020. Upon submission of the bids, the cost of design and administration was not included in the total budget cost. Fortunately, the library has enough money in their cash reserve to make up the difference and still has more than the required 1/12 of cash reserves. Recommendation by council is to amend the library's 2020 budget to increase the expenditures for the LIB 035 by $47,000, which will be funded through the library's cash reserve.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Straight. Discussion, Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. Going back to our March 2nd meeting, I supported this item in spite of the fact that it was at that time probably more than 20% above its expected budget. And now we have another mistake added to it that is adding another $47,000. All in, we're $432,000. This is a critical piece of infrastructure of the city. I support the library, the mission, the work we're doing over there, but the way this has come about, I needed to draw attention to it because we have to make sure that we are, we're good stewards. We are acknowledging that this is going on, and I have some concerns here. I'm going to support this tonight because I think our only way forward is to actually get this project done, and this is a cost that we need to acknowledge, but I think we need to be better on these projects in the future.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfsky?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion approved. 6.16 is the authorization to authorize execution of the Blue on Broadway Flex Pace documents. The state of North Dakota through the Bank of North Dakota offers incentive programs to promote private sector investments in affordable housing for low and moderate income residents. The Bank of North Dakota has determined that the Blue on Broadway mixed-use development qualifies for the Flex Pace program. The Bank of North Dakota Flex Pace program requires two standard documents to be executed by the local government in which the project is located, which is the escrow agreement and the interest buydown agreement. Recommendation is the city council authorized the execution of the Bank of North Dakota Flex Pace documents for Blue on Broadway.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser. Alderman Wolfsky, you'd asked this to be pulled.
I did, Mayor Sitma. I believe we've all been attached to, or at least to some degree. I know I'm in the loop on, I don't know who else is, on some concerns with this project that they've been raised by a local contractor. I don't know whether the concerns have merit, but I do believe they are outstanding in terms of without resolution, and I don't think it's prudent to, to act on adding incentives in this environment. I see Mr. Zakian standing up, but it would be my inclination to table this for a couple of weeks until we have assurances that that issue is resolved.
Oh, thank you, Alderman Wolfsky. Mr. Zakian, you'd sent out an email earlier today outlining those concerns and addressing those. If you would, maybe go through those for confirmation that the issue, where it stands.
Okay. Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolfsky. An individual contractor did raise some questions regarding the selection of contractors for Blue on Broadway. Upon my request, he did offer some clarification as to what his concerns were. As you noted, I did, point by point by point, answer him. Actually, the email was sent out yesterday. You all copied on it. Based on what he raised and the review of the law, there is no basis for any of his complaints. Each one was responded to as required by HUD. The underlying question was whether or not the selection process for contractors was appropriate pursuant to federal law. When using a developer for a project, especially an LMI project, it is totally within the purview of the developer to use whatever methodology that developer believes to be appropriate for the selection of contractors. They do not need, or they are not required by federal law, to use competitive bids. To the credit of the Blue on Broadway developers, they did use competitive bids, and they have awarded all the different contracts to the lowest bidder. But again, that's totally within their purview. Now, to be clear, especially for the public listening, to get to the point of selecting a developer, we did an extensive vetting process of the costs related to this project, and the underlying cap of NDR funds that will support this project went through a very rigorous, necessary, and reasonable assessment, which again, is what is required by HUD. The development agreement for NDR that this council approved recently covers all the requirements and specifications that a developer has to live up to, but it is totally at the discretion of the developer on methodology for contracting and for who they choose as contractors. Now, there are three areas that the city can look at, and we've already begun that process. One is that every time the developer submits a request for reimbursement for some of the cost, it is necessary that attached to that is not only a list of the specific expenses, but demonstration that all the contracts on which those costs are based meet the, again, the HUD standard of necessary and reasonable. The second compliance requirement that a grantee is required to follow, and we're not at that point yet, but it is within our purview, and we have already set this up to be done. We will monitor this project to make sure that they are in compliance with the Federal Davis Bacon Law regarding prevailing wage for all contractor services. The third basis for a complaint is a complaint that comes into us regarding discrimination based on such statutes as the civil rights laws. Anytime we receive such a complaint, we have the obligation and responsibility to investigate that complaint and resolve it. Nothing that this individual contractor provided to us at any relationship to any of those requirements.
Mr. Zakian, there was just one other point that you had made at the end of that email as far as a timeframe for response.
Yes, under the federal statutes, a grantee has 15 days to respond to a complaint. My response was three days.
Thank you, Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Sitma, thanks. John, I appreciate the update, and I apologize. I missed this email yesterday between everything else that was going on, and I'm reading it here, so I appreciate your explanation tonight. I think sometimes it's good for the public to hear these things as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Zakian? Thank you, John. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Any further discussion? Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I still won't support this item tonight. I've been opposed to this project from the beginning for a number of reasons, one of which was some of the variances that were granted, the saturation, the amount of people that were allowing to be in this small of an area, and splash pad on Broadway, all to subsidize the bottom line, and some of the concerns I think were realized when a young man lost his life very close to that intersection in that project a couple of weeks ago. And for those reasons, I still can't support this project going forward.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
No.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfsky?
No.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion approved. That takes us to our action items. 7.1 on our agenda was pulled as, that is going to be brought back in July for council consideration. 7.2 on our agenda then is the approval of the plan and specs for 3529-04A, the Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Project Phase MI 4A, the Maple Divergent Utility Relocation. Providing flood risk reduction for Minot is a large part of the overall Mouse River Plan. Relocating the sewer water, et cetera, that occurs, that currently crosses the alignment of the Maple Divergent will allow the work to proceed in a more efficient manner. A project of this size will be done various segments or stages. Two recommendations before us is recommendation council approve the plan and specifications and recommend the approval to SRJB for bidding of the utility relocation portion of the Maple Divergent MI 4A of the Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Project and to approve the resolution of funding.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Sitma, thanks. Probably a question for Mr. Jonison. When we were having the discussion about the city hall retaining wall, there was some, some timing discussion about a, some underground work needing to be done before MI 4 moves forward, but trying
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Jonison? Not, I will just offer up that this was part of the discussion, and as we're moving forward with our State Water Commission Water Topics Committee moving forward to ensure that we've got the money, appropriate money, moving forward, that we don't see substantial delays where we're at as Water Topics will be in town here in, Dan, help me out here.
August.
August, for a tour and for an update on where we're at, and also for some decision-makings coming up into the next legislative session. Alderman Wolski?
Mayor Sitma, one more comment here. Obviously, the three years I've been up here, flood protection has been a huge priority, and I'm glad to see this project moving forward. Obviously, we've got Senator Hoven, you know, working the federal angle, trying to get us approval there, and the closer MI4 is to shovel-ready, I think the better off we're going to be, and this is a step in that direction. So fully support this work tonight.
Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback on Alderman Wolski's point, I think many of us, if we're paying attention to what's happening with the federal government and financing coming out of COVID, and clearly there's a lot of discussion about maybe an infrastructure bill, I think we can all hope, with our fingers crossed, that maybe our great senators are going to be able to pull off a miracle there and include something like maybe the Maple Diversion funding to move forward, and that would be a great stroke for us. But that's something I'm going to be watching closely as we move forward to future discussions of stimulus dollars and also infrastructure spending, sir. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Straight, and I would expect that very thing to be at the forefront of discussion as those, as that process moves forward. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Motion approved. 7.3 is the Second Penny Sales Tax. The Second Penny Sales Tax is scheduled to sunset on June 1st, 2021. A portion of the tax is used to finance projects such as NOS, Northwest Area Water Supply Project, and flood control. The extending of the tax would allow the continuation use, continued use of the proceeds to fund these projects. The recommendation before city council was to prove the language to, for the reinstatement of the Second Penny Sales Tax following the anticipated expiration of June 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Discussion on the motion. I might look to our finance director, Mr. Lakefield, here for just a little bit of information regarding this item with some of the language.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've been going back and forth a little bit on this with the state tax commissioner's office, and this penny of sales tax was a little bit unique in that it was approved by the council, subject to approval by the voters in 2011, and that election was held on June 14th, 2011. The language in the ordinance says that it's effective on the later of these actions, which would have been the approval by the voters on June 14th. The state tax commissioner has, their office has a little bit different take on that because when we contract with them to administer the tax, and because they are a member of the streamlined sales tax collection, they have to have these ordinances 90 days in advance of the first day of a quarter. So anything approved in June, the first day of the quarter would have been July, and then 90 days after that would have been October 1st. So the state tax commissioner's office, their opinion is that this sales tax will sunset September 30th, 2021. The new penny would be effective October 1st, 2021, but the language in the ordinance still references June. So we're still working through some of that. We've left the language in June right now. We may have to revisit this as we iron this out with the state tax commissioner's office. An alternative that we may have to resolve that would be to back this up to the first day of the quarter prior to that, so we don't have a gap in the collection of sales tax. So on second reading, there's a possibility we may come back with an April 1st effective date. So we're still trying to iron that out. We want to make sure that we don't have a gap in this collection, and we want to have all of our eyes dotted, so to speak, so.
Thank you for that clarification on there, as very well as just could be some language changes coming up on second reading. Any questions for Mr. Lakefield or any further discussion? Alderman Olson?
Mr. Mayor, it may be helpful for the public to just have a little explanation as to why this could be extended through council action and not the vote of the public.
Mr. Mayor Alderman Olson, it was my understanding when this ordinance was changed back in 2011, initially this sales tax was funding NOS, and NOS was tied up in litigation, and the expectation was that they had already collected sufficient money to fund the NOS through completion. So this sales tax was being redirected, and one of the things that they were accomplishing with this was the Community Facilities Fund. So that is one of the reasons why, it's my understanding anyway, that it was sent to the voters for approval, even though that may not have been required even in 2011.
Thank you.
Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just for a comment that I know many of the residents in the community would like the money once NOS is paid for, and I'm going to look at Director Jonison, he might have to correct me, but I know there's a back and forth discussion, is NOS going to be done in five years, or is it going to be done in seven years? And I think at that time, the public is very much going to want to have a conversation, and maybe to Alderman Olson's point, maybe even a, an offer that they can participate in that decision-making of where those dollars are going to be going back to. Obviously, you know, someone that lives on the east side of Minot, we need flood control. We clearly recognize that NOS is important as a hub and for the region, but I think that there are members in this community that think that the hub city dollars have benefited our community greatly. They've made Minot an attractive community and also bring sales tax dollars into town, and I think that's only going to continue. If you look at the Children's Museum, the upgrades made at the zoo, the updates made at Minot State, and so it would be my hope that when we get to that point down the road that folks will keep that in mind and also enter their voice into that conversation, because I think it's an important piece to the goodwill of the community participation, but also the quality of life that makes Minot a pretty special place to live, sir. So thank you for that.
Alderman Janser?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would also ask maybe Mr. Lakefield in terms of, as we go forward with flood control projects and with this money in this penny dedicated to flood control, and considering that we're bonding for some of those things, is there a, are those like 20-year bonds, 30-year bonds? I mean, what, what kind of length of time are we looking at for that part of the obligation?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Janser, that's one of those unknowns as well. One of the things we have been asking for with our discussions with the state legislature the last couple of sessions with the long-term low-interest loans was also an extended term of 40 years, and that is one of the things that was brought about in those discussions. So some of the language, because a portion of this sales tax funds flood control, if we are going to issue bonds to pay for that flood control, we can't have the sales tax expiring during the life of those bonds, or we have to have an alternative funding source, and they would be less attractive to the bondholders if we were to have that sales tax expire 10 years into a 40-year bond. So on the recommendation of our bond council, we've added some language in there as far as the termination clause to cover any outstanding debt that we might have in relation to those projects.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Wolski?
Mayor Sitma, quickly, this is a absolutely critical revenue source for us, and I'm appreciative that it's here early, so we're talking about this well in advance of these deadlines. And I know to get it here at this point, our staff has been working on this for a year or certainly going back quite a ways. So thank you guys for being very proactive on this. There's no shortage of sales tax conversations that we could have, and I, if I were a dictator, I would say, let's really sit down and hash this out. But I think it's important to keep this process moving. There are ideas still in play. I like what Alderman Straight suggested, which is, let's keep this moving, but be willing to have the conversations about potential adjustments to make sure that this tool is being used to the degree that it's meeting the needs of our community. And I think that needs to be sort of an ongoing, a regularly revisited topic, because these structure, these buckets that we were working with, I think they, we've looked at them more recently, and I'm glad that we did that, but they went through a very long period where they didn't move very much. And I think, I think we need to stay more agile with this stuff. So with that, I'm going to support this tonight. I'm also going to recommend that we do not see a second reading while this council still sits. I think to sort of have community buy-in for what we're talking about here, I think it's very important that the next council sometime after July, or during July, just after they sit, has a voice in this approval as well.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Motion approved. 7.4 is support request of Congress to extend the CDBG NDR until September 30th, 2025. During the past 30 days, the grantee administrators representing the 13th CDBG NDR, I'm sorry, CDBG DR grantees have held virtual meetings to speak to reach agreements on common, on a common extension request to be sent to Congress. The CDBG NDR grantees agreed that the steps to be taken seek the extension for all 13 grant administrators to concur on the strategy. Second step is to commence June 1st for the 13 grantee administrators to secure letters of support from their appropriate elected officials. The recommendation before city council was to support the letter from 13 CDBG NDR grantees asking Congress to extend the deadline to September 30th, 2025, and authorize the mayor to send the support letter to the North Dakota delegation. Move approval? Motion by Alderman Pitner to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski? Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.5 on our agenda is the NDR Ecological Restoration Planning Discussion in Action. A series of flood storage and eco-restation projects in Minot will establish an open-space network to increase the city's resilience, reduce the scale of cost, reduce the scale and cost of other flood protection measures, and reconnect Minot to the Suris River. The NDR Ecological Restoration Planning Project currently has a funding available in the amount of $355,162. The city council issue is discuss and consider action to advance ecological restoration planning feasibility and implementation phase. Alderman Wolski, you had asked that this be put on the agenda. I will look to you.
Mayor Sitma, thank you, yes. Appreciate that explanation as summarized by our city clerk. Thank you, Kelly. I'm going to just kind of quickly go through the memo here so we're all up to speed, the public as well. Ecological restoration, this project was a part of our Phase 2 application. The pertinent language I've copied, but I'm going to read it here very quickly. "A series of flood storage and eco-restation projects in Minot will establish an open-space network to increase the city's resilience. The open spaces will reduce flood levels during storm events, restore riparian habitat, engage residents in the management and stewardship of the river, and ensure productive public use of the waterfront, so it enhances the city's economy, social life, and overall resilience." I think that's a really key point, and it speaks to the vision and the big picture that was identified in the Phase 2 application. Obviously, we all know that the Phase 2 application was not funded in full. The NDR action plan became truncated in some cases, and the actual action plan became far more prescriptive once we got into the practice of doing the NDR work. And so that language from the action plan that provides guidance on this project is the Ecological Restoration Guidance Manual for Flood Storage will include guidance that covers activities from evaluation of the parcels to potential development of parcels for uses as wildlife habitat areas, trail areas, habitat restoration areas, and areas where outdoor environmental education activities may be suitable. The manual will combine flood storage and water management strategies as well as non-structural solutions like biouts and flood-term protection systems. So the other thing I want to make everybody aware of, you've all seen copies of it going back to the last meeting, is the resolution of support that we, the council, passed January, or July of 2017. This is a, just a general resolution to say, yes, let's tackle these dead-loop problems. Let's imagine the river as a place that can be a resource rather than a source of fear. And then let's get these things moving to see what we can, we can do with it. Given all of these three circumstances, I believe we have a financial resource here in the NDR program that is a very good fit with the intent of the council. The, imagine the Suris Waterway concept, the Magic City Waterway, the restoration of the dead loops, I think is very in spirit and in keeping with the Phase 2 application. For me, this is really a matter of making sure that, that what we want to do is in alignment with what we can do. And for that, I would request Mr. Zakian step up here and share some comments. One of the ideas that I had proposed was, was engaging the Suris River Joint Board in a subrecipient agreement. They already have engineers and consultants on the ground doing work around the river. They are already conducting certain aspects of this river restoration project. So, John, please, share comments on what we're talking about here and maybe a pathway to moving this forward.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolski. Ironically, and I did follow through based on the information that Alderman Wolski had provided us starting from the previous council meeting, and made some inquiries about the history of how this became a planning study. One thing I discovered, and no one can explain to me why, and I, to be honest, I'm frankly shocked, but the joint Suris, I always get this wrong.
Suris River Joint Board.
Thank you. Is not a partner in the CDBG NDR Phase 2 application or in the CDBG NDR action plan, which means it's on the outside looking in, in the context of being able to immediately enter into a subrecipient agreement with them. Now, very briefly, as Alderman Wolski did point out, the much larger application, which was in the vicinity, I keep estimating, I should know this by now, but in the area of $170 million, remember, we got cut down to 74.3, included a number of projects that for a variety of reasons didn't make the final cut. The basic reason some of the projects did not make the final cut, when it had to be reduced to 74.3, is because it didn't score high enough to be included. One of the concepts that was in the original Phase 2 was a series of trailways and walkways connecting all of the flood storage areas and the flood wall projects and the levee projects to areas like Oak Park. When it got cut down to 70.3, that was cut out, and in place of that was this planning study. And the premise behind this planning study was to create a manual, a guidebook, as Alderman Wolski pointed out, that could be used as a guide in the future with other resources to create natural connections resulting from all the flood biout areas, all of the improvements to the Suris River basin, all the flood control projects, and all the existing parks. Now, in 2017 and 2018, one of the partners in the NDRC application and the NDRC action plan was the Park District, and there were And there were, I'm looking at Alderman Straight because he was very actively involved in that. There were some very serious discussions about utilizing this $355,000 to advance that concept in partnership with the Park District, ultimately with the Park District looking at various options to leverage resources. It primarily got pushed sideways for two reasons, but still, in concept, remains a potential viable option to pursue. The first one was a question of what is eligible construction in flood buyout areas? And it took a while, but we did get in writing from HUD guidance as to what they deemed as eligible uses inside flood buyout areas. So a lot, but not all, of the concepts that have been explored between the city and the Park District could be eligible. The second issue, which continues to be a challenge, is the ultimate resources. If we move forward with a concept and a plan, and we could certainly still use this planning money, we would still need to identify for implementation purposes. We would not need to identify resources, and obviously, we're looking towards the Park District, and, you know, as you all know, they have enough, they have a considerable amount on their plate right now. So taking on any new major capital projects in 18 and 19 didn't seem viable. So it was kind of pushed to the side, but still remains there. So that's still an option. In terms of the overall picture of the future of the Suris River, including, I believe, what you call the dead loops, I mean, certainly that can be brought into the discussion, but a specific concentration on that issue per se is not within the scope of what the city ultimately in 2016 and 17 put into this planning study. But it certainly could be part of the conversation, especially if you want to further reengage the Park District. Now, the way this was proceeding in 17 and 18 was that we were having just ongoing what-if discussions with the Park District. We were not at a point where we were going to enter into any formal subrecipient agreement with them. The city could do that going forward, and that subrecipient agreement could include a purpose and mission and deliverables to the city and also to the Park District using this $355,000. Remember that the two underlying principles with any agreement, especially on the subrecipient agreement, especially even on the planning side for all the different planning activities, is we have to go backwards and connect it to impact from the flood and going forward to show that lessons learned from the impact of the flood, the measures that we are proposing to look at from a planning standpoint that will result in implementation will mitigate those types of flooding activities in the future and promote resilient, sustainable growth for the city. That's basically the framework.
Alderman Wolfski.
Yeah, John, I'm not terribly concerned about creating a connection to the, to the flood. These dead loops are connected to every flood in, in Minot's history. They are a result of our previous flood protection projects. So I feel like we have an exceptionally strong case to make in that regard. This is the river, these are, these are flood protection, storage areas, every one of them in their function. My, my concern is, so the SRJB is, is not a partner currently in the project, and I think that is probably an oversight that, that we need to acknowledge and maybe even correct, independent of all this action. The SRJB frankly is, is one of the most extraordinary significant partners to everything going on in the city with regards to flood protection and impacts from the flood, but also they were a financial contributor to the Phase 2 application. There were hard dollars delivered from that organization to us that contributed to the development of the application. So in terms of what, so here's the question. What, can we, whether it's through a substantial amendment or a technical amendment, add them as a partner so that they can become a partner in this work? Would that allow us to move forward?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolfski. I honestly don't know on the que, well, here's a two-part answer to your question. To accomplish getting the dead loops into this planning process would probably require a substantial amendment. We could probably, because they are a public agency, which is an eligible entity to be a subrecipient agreement, we could probably craft a means and method that would meet HUD's standards to do a subrecipient agreement with them on these funds. But in terms of moving away from the manual concept, which is focused on the buyouts, that would require a substantial amendment.
Follow-up here, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Wolfski.
John, at what point do, do we make an argument to HUD and say, look, this, this prescriptive action plan, it doesn't meet our needs today? And, and when we look back on recent NDR projects, some, some of them very specific, like the Decision Support Tool, which was a very specific prescriptive significant investment of NDR funds, that, let's be frank, has not been particularly valuable to us. We have identified a, an opportunity to take these dollars to, to adapt them to a desire in the community by the citizens, by a known issue, and move this forward. And so that's what I, that's what I want tonight, is, is a pathway. I realize it might not be perfect now, but, but I want, I want you to help me find the language, find the motion that, that gives us action that, and gives you confidence going to HUD saying, this community's on board with this project, and then I want us to vote on it. And so help me get there.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolfski. Two-part answer to that. HUD will entertain whatever the prescriptive measure may be, whether it's a technical amendment or a substantial amendment, depending on how it triggers under the rules. The first thing HUD is going to ask is, show us where in your initial application and action plan, the issue you want to address is discussed and cited as an unmet need, and the dead loops are not in the city's action plan.
I guess I would refer to them as flood protection, storage areas, which, which are in the actual activity. They're just absolutely, that's what they are.
Here's, and I understand where you're going, but here's the problem. Sometimes a grantee can be too specific when it's not necessary. If the, if the language in the city's action plan was exactly generic in terms of focusing on flood storage areas, you'd have an argument. The city is specific in the action plan that it's creating through buyouts flood storage areas, and the ecological restoration study is connected to that activity. You know.
And there's nothing we can do to change this? There's no amendment, no substantial amendment, there is absolutely nothing. We are restricted to only using these $355,000 in areas where we have bought out parcels.
You could authorize a substantial amendment, which includes not only changing the scope of the planning study, but also requiring that the work that is done to do that will require addressing the unmet needs that are connected to using the dead loops as flood storage areas, to add that to the scope of what was not met.
For argument's sake on this, and maybe this is a question for Alderman Wolfski as well. In terms of asking the, in terms of asking HUD, are we looking for a pathway to asking on how we can use, utilize these dollars to design, or utilizing these dollars to do physical work?
My presumption, Mayor, and I'm going to find my language here, but this is the activity that I would propose, and whether that is through a substantial amendment. First of all, I think we need to name our partners. We have neglected doing that at this point with the Suris River Joint Board. Obviously, the Minot Park District should be a partner to this work. Our current action plan item actually contains specific references to education. So I think in this case, we would probably want to maybe even invoke Minot Public Schools and Minot State. There, there is a resource here on an educational front.
And they are, and they are both partners.
They are both, that's good to hear, so we don't need to specifically name them. Since the development of this project, we have added a new partner in town. Autobahn North Dakota, through the North Dakota Industrial, Industrial Commission's Outdoor Heritage Fund, has secured approximately $400,000 to do habitat restoration, native species restoration along the river. A significant chunk of that is designated specifically for Minot through the Park District. Again, we have habitat restoration, we have ecological restoration, we have another state partner. You know, I wonder if we wouldn't even attempt to try and capture the several hundred thousand dollars that are coming into Minot through that as leverage, additional people supporting this work. But, but the specific language that I would like to see in this activity is to gather stakeholder input, conduct planning and partner coordination, and preliminary engineer, preliminary engineering necessary for phasing and estimating activities associated with the following. Ecological habitat restoration in our buyout areas along the river channel, in our flood storage areas known locally as dead loops, and in other areas adjacent to the river corridor already held by the public. These should be assumed to include, but not be limited by the following specific goals. The development of terrestrial trails, water trails, river access points, restoration of native species habitat, and passive maintenance spaces, and opportunities for public use that include walking, biking, cross-country skiing, skating, in-town camping, fishing, canoeing, kayaking, education, and birding, as well as additional and needed supporting amenities. So my, my hope is to be very specific in our, our, our concept, but also capturing what we have incorporated into the, the existing action plan as well.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolfski, let me try this. If the city moved forward, as was discussed in 17 and 18, and we have an agreeable Park District, and enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Park District to utilize these funds based on the scope it has, as long as we're not talking about doing any work.
This is not the physical construction of the project.
No, well.
We have a lot of work in.
But no, here's where I'm going with this. Well, to be fair, you know, I think to move this forward, we can't use this money to design ways to reopen the dead loops. We can use these funds, the more we talk about this, to include the dead loops in the planning study within the scope of the Ecological Restoration Manual, because as I hear this discussion going forward, I'm comfortable making a case that it's part of the flood storage areas. Now, in that context, don't even really need action tonight. I mean, if that is a sense of what's okay with this council, I can open up conversations with the Park District. But as long as we stay clearly within the confines of what is envisioned in the language and the action plan, yeah, then we could move forward.
Perhaps, and this may seem too simplistic, if we were to have a subrecipient agreement with the Minot Park District, and they were to have the SRJB do the work, it seems too simplistic, how does that, how does that look or work?
Mayor Sitma, I think you've been listening to me too much. We enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Park District, and we say, okay, we're giving you the $355,000. If they want to do a sub-subrecipient agreement with the joint board, that will be within their purview to do.
Excellent. Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, John, I appreciate the back and forth, and I guess that was going to be my, my question for Mr. Wolfski, just because I think that that is the path that I think we all could probably get on board with, especially tonight, in part because I look across at Alderman Pittner, and he's reminded me numerous times, Shannon, we can't just have flood control, we need to have other amenities. I think this delivers that. But also what it does is, we've also heard oftentimes that staff have a lot on their plate. And I think if we work on the subrecipient agreement with the Minot Park District, and within the motion, we designate that we would like them to ask for the second with SRJB, that we can maybe give, one, obviously, the city's going to be involved because we got to check the boxes and make sure that we're never going to upset HUD, but I think that we can deliver moving this project forward, because Director Jonison is in the back of the word, the room, and he's our representative on SRJB, so I think he would clearly be able to communicate the intent of what we're trying to do. And I think that it gets the ultimate goal of, of what Alderman Wolfski is after while moving it forward and not complicating it or confusing it. I think we oftentimes have been frustrated by NDR in general, but I think that John has just cleared us a pathway. So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would make a motion that we.
Maybe, Alderman Straight, and I really don't want to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
Apologize. But maybe before we make a motion and put, let's say, some direct actionable item on Mr. Zakian, we have him for 18 more days, would it be more prudent to direct perhaps you, Mr. Zakian, and Mr. Jonison to approach the Park District to find out their willingness prior to, I think, locking down a motion?
I, I could agree with that. I, I don't necessarily have to have, micromanage it, I would prefer Alderman Wolfski just because.
Mayor Sitma, I had a conversation with Mr. Merritt on Friday, and he expressed an eagerness to be a partner in this work. So I, I think we, we have a local partner at the table who is, at the very least, expressed enough interest to move this forward tonight. And, and Mr. Straight was going to offer a motion, but, but I'm prepared to do that as well.
I would look to either one of you for the motion, then.
I am, I am going to deliver it here, and I'm actually going to email Ms. Matalka the specifics of this. This is the larger part of what I simply read a moment ago, but that we, we approached the Minot Park District about the possibility of entering into a subrecipient agreement to help us with our ecological restoration planning, specifically to gather stakeholder input, conduct planning and partner coordination, and preliminary engineering necessary for phasing and estimating activities associated with the following. Ecological habitat restoration in our buyout areas along the river, along the active river channel, in our flood storage areas known locally as dead loops, and in other areas adjacent to the river corridor already held by the public. These should assume, be assumed to include, but not be limited by the following specific goals. Development of terrestrial trails, water trails and river access points, restoration of native species and habitat, passive maintenance spaces, and opportunities for public uses that include walking, biking, cross-country skiing, in-town camping, fishing, canoeing, kayaking, education, and birding, as well as additional and necessary supporting amenities.
Perhaps one of the longer motions I've heard.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. I just have one quick question for Mr. Zakian on there. Do you anticipate any of this to walk down the road of either technical or substantial amendment, at least at the, the top 30,000 level?
Mayor Sitma, good question. Based on what I am feeling as the sentiment here, no.
Okay.
And I will, because you have appropriately pointed out, I am here for the next meeting. I intentionally would not leave here until we are completed through these two adjourned meetings. I will reach out tomorrow and try to start a conversation, maybe be able, not to get specific subrecipient agreement to you, but get the framework and be able to get it to you for the next council meeting.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion, Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Alderman Wolfski to also add the, the recommendation to include the SRJB as the second?
I would agree to that.
And the second agrees? Okay.
There's a, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I think there is, the reason I brought the SRJB as a potential partner to this work is because they are already neck-deep in it. They, they have engineers on the ground, they have the data, they have, they are, they are already so well acquainted with what we're attempting to do here that they, they seem like a really, this was a way to hit the ground running. But, but. hit the ground running. But I know the park district will have the same motives to make the most of these dollars, and I would expect the SRJB will end up an excellent partner to this work one way or another.
Alderman Straight.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to close, you worked, put in an awful lot of legwork to consolidate the parks with our rec. department, and I just think this is the logical next step. So that's why I'm, and also just to John's point, there's going to be a lag in between us filling the void once John leaves. And I think that this work can continue in a manner that is, again, adding quality of life to our residents, and this just seems like the logical next step. So, thank you.
And for the last point for the folks that are listening at home, with the NDR dollars, National Disaster Resiliency, this is the federal grant dollars that were designated for this purpose or similar purpose, as we have discussed. Any further discussion? Alderman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Zakian, although I do find this interesting and probably would vote to approve it, would there be any other purpose for this money before we allocate it to this project?
Mayor Sima, Alderman Olson, at this point, no. This had been one of the options that had been on the table a few meetings ago in terms of consolidating all the planning funds and using that as part of the adjustments in a substantial amendment. It turns out that wasn't necessary based on the actions taken by this council. So this planning money is still intended for its current purposes.
All right, thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Seeing none, please call to roll.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sima?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to our next item. 7.6 is the NDR Economic Resilience Strategic Plan Funding Discussion in Action. The Strong Towns site visits typically consist of a public presentation followed by more in-depth conversations and consulting with key stakeholders. Common focus areas include a strong town approach to affordable housing, neighborhood resiliency, capital investment, job growth, and economic development, public engagement, public transportation, and urban design principles. Economic resilience strategic planning was funded by the NDR grant in the amount of $299,025, and there is a remaining balance of $60,000. Recommendation tonight for council is discuss the strategic economic resilience planning and consulting with Strong Towns over multiple visits. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sima, thank you. I think that really sums it up. For the audience listening, Strong Towns is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based in Minnesota. Their founder, Chuck Marone, has been a keynote speaker at both of Governor Burgum's Main Street summits. He is, I believe, a former Minnesota Department of Transportation engineer, lots of experience in community planning. And over the course of his career, he became somewhat disenfranchised with the standing practices, many of the former and in some cases, current standing practices with municipal growth, design, neighborhood development, and started looking at things differently. And the result was Strong Towns as a nonprofit. And I've shared with you some of their mission, but, and added resources to explore the organization and what they do. But their mission is to support a model of development that allows America's cities, towns, and neighborhoods to grow financially strong and resilient. They, if you haven't had the opportunity to listen to Mr. Marone in a presentation, he makes a very compelling argument for why we are in these constant struggles with our budgets and constantly short of resources to meet our needs. And given the extraordinary uncertainty that has emerged into the world in a very short period of time, I think this is a message that would be very beneficial not just to we and those of us here at the city of Minot, but the nature of their site visits allow us to share this resource. These are public presentations, oftentimes members from the general public to other political subdivisions, to our supporting neighbors that would be allowed to join us and hear these messages and simply get a look at a different approach, a different way to look at how we make our decisions and how we prioritize and where we set our values. So with that, John, that's my take. John, thoughts, concerns in terms of the appropriateness of this for the NDR dollars?
Mayor Sima, Alderman Wolski, well, let me start by saying they are 501(c)(3), so within a certain context, they could be coming here as a sub-recipient. Let me start by saying what they can't do, because we can't duplicate what we've already paid for. So let me start with a caveat. So one of the HUD rules that I really haven't had to speak to you about, but is one of their more righteous, strongly enforced rules, is that you can't use CDBG or CDBGDR or CDBG-NDR funds for any activity that is already being funded by a local government. So if you recall, for instance, so branding and marketing off the table, because the city entered into agreement with all the stakeholders, with the lead being Visit Minot, using magic funds to provide this city with a branding and marketing strategy. Can't use NDR funds for that. We have engaged, strengthened ND to do a resource development, and there is that 500-option resource grant book that is on the city's website that they did. So they can't come in and talk about grant opportunities. As part of the IEDC white paperwork, they came in and did a relatively deep-dyed assessment on all the alternate available in North Dakota resources for promoting sustainable development: TIFs, Job Development Authority, Redevelopment Authority, Renaissance Zone, Opportunity Zone. So all that's off the table, too. Basically, everything that was in the IEDC report, which was basically doing a SWOT analysis of economic development structure and making a series of recommendations with a primary focus on how do we re-jumpstart the downtown, that can't be done again. Having laid that all out as can't be repeated again, we can't use NDR funds to just invite people to come in and speak to us. We need deliverables. So I could certainly invite Strong Towns as a 501(c)(3) to offer us a proposal with all the caveats I just gave you, so they don't fall into duplication, to give us a proposal with deliverables, written deliverables that could become part of the city's overall strategy product for long-term sustainable growth in a resilience downtown. The focus would have to be on the downtown and also the Oak Park area, because those are the two areas that were affected by the flood. There can be, as was with the IEDC report, taking into account the overall city, but the primary laser focus has to be the downtown. Within that context, sure, they, you know, we could reach out and invite them to give us a proposal, and then based on that proposal, we could craft a sub-recipient agreement.
Alderman Wolski.
So moved.
Second.
With an authorization to, of $40,000.
Forty? Okay.
Which would leave approximately $20,000 in this line item.
We have a motion on the approach and approval of the agreement, or I'm sorry, the request for proposal at $40,000, a second from Alderman Straight. Discussion. Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to...
Alderman Wolski.
We moved to do what John requested, but I want to provide just a little bit of clarification there, which is that we invite a Strong Towns to provide a deliverable on a Strong Towns approach to economic and disaster resilience, affordable housing, neighborhood resiliency, and long-term sustainable growth, as well, with a focus on downtown Minot.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm supportive of this for a number of reasons, and I want to cycle back around to a comment that Alderman Olson had made previously. But I think that this gives the city of Minot the opportunity to do something that's proactive for our business community at a time that's incredibly challenging. And it is something that a lot of people and a lot of effort went into this NDR application long before I ever sat up here, but I've heard about it for four years. And I've heard about the city of Minot being a partner, some of the challenges working with the city of Minot. But I know a lot of businesses in this community are struggling. And I think this is the reason why, let's do something. We can invite the downtown, but we can invite the entire business community. The only challenge is, let's do it at a time when we can actually gather and get together in a manner that can add the creative fuel, and we don't have to distance, you know, socially and add a lot of additional expense to that. But it's, to Alderman Olson's point, I recognize that we need to stretch dollars and make it work. But I keep coming back to Alderman Pittner, we need something more than just flood protection, and we need to be receptive to the people that have put the work into this application. And times have changed. I've advocated oftentimes for some of these projects, even sometimes against some of the projects. But I think that there's one universal truth that we still have is we have a very difficult business climate currently, and I think anything that the city of Minot can do within NDR dollars to reach out and lend a hand and just give an opportunity for something different, I think that that's putting ourselves, our best foot forward, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Padraig O'Leary.
I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this, but I just wanted to make some comments. I guess the first comment is, and I like the idea of using potential funding sources to help the community out, and I think economic resilience is even more important now with the pandemic and the meltdown of the national economy and the world economy. I do have some concerns, though. I guess the first concern is whether they're a nonprofit or not is irrelevant to me. There are nonprofits that are very good, very well managed, and there are other nonprofits that I don't think hold any advantages. So I think their tax status is irrelevant here. I also am concerned about the proliferation of studies. We have studies here, we have studies there, we have studies everywhere. And I think it's important that we deliver something to people, something concrete, something useful. Now, the results of a study can be useful, too, but I'm concerned that we're just proliferating these kinds of things. My third concern is that we have to look at more than just downtown, and I think this does do that. As I'm going around the community, talking with lots of people, I keep hearing, to a surprising extent, the number of people who say, yes, we need it in downtown, we need it vibrant, we need it strong, but it's gotten enough. It's happened that massive infrastructure project several years ago, we got numerous awards on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I understand that these NDR funds, you know, have to be focused to some extent on downtown, but I think it's also very important that we listen to people who say economic activity and business and other good things are more than just downtown. I also wonder why Strong Towns. When I read their website, in which I wanted to thank Josh for giving us the information in advance, one of the things they bill themselves as at the very outset is a media organization. Huh? Media organization? I've never heard the guy. My guess is there are probably dozens, if not hundreds, of organizations like this. And I'd like to get some input from Mr. Zakian and our economic development person and planning person as to, you know, what other outfits are there. Just because, you know, we heard someone speak, I don't know if that's enough to give them, you know, $30,000 or $40,000 or $50,000 or $60,000. So I'd like to know a little bit more. I don't see anything here that concerns me, that alarms me, but I'm wondering why this particular outfit. And last but not least, I think this really is part of, or should be part of, a longer-term strategic planning process. We were heading in that direction before the previous city manager left us, and there are a lot of things that I think really are undone in terms of doing strategic planning. If we can subsidize some of that within the R funds, great. But I think it's important that we have that kind of process on an ongoing basis. And if we can use the NDRs funds to kind of jumpstart it, that's good, that's fine, I have no objection. But it concerns me, there's kind of an ad hoc, you know, character to this. We have this money, let's find a use for it. I think the big issue for me is strategic planning and resilience planning be built into what we do, you know, maybe not day in and day out, but certainly month in and month out. So those are some of the concerns I have about this. Again, not necessarily going to oppose it, but I have some hesitancy, and I think it raises even broader and more important issues, which I wanted to bring up.
Alderman Janser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to be clear about what the motion is. I would hope that we are not, in this, approving a proposal that we don't yet have, I guess. So is my understanding that we're going to request a proposal from Strong Towns and indicate that we may have up to $40,000 to spend on whatever deliverables come up in the proposal? Or are we saying we're going to spend $40,000 with these folks? Because if it's the latter, then I'm not able to support it at this time.
Alderman Janser, my assumption is it's the first piece of that, but I will look to Alderman Wolski for confirmation.
I mean, I guess I'm assuming that we're going to see the proposal when it's produced and be able to make a judgment about whether what we're getting is worth the money that they're asking for.
The, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Wolski.
Thank you. Mr. Janser, what I see us doing today is saying, this is, this approach, this perspective is worth pursuing. I think in order to get a true feel for what we're going to get, what Strong Towns can provide to us, it is going to take more than a single visit. These, what they do, I think, in many cases, is kind of plant a seed initially. And that has to ferment, that has to sort of live with us for a little while before we start to take the rest of it in. And so I think, I am not even 100% sure that when Mr. Zakian reaches out to Strong Towns, if this is ultimately approved, they're going to say yes to this. So I think we are, what we are doing tonight is establishing a direction to move forward, and we know what we need to get back to make this fit with the NDR resilience dollars. And we may hear back very shortly that this just isn't quite the right fit, and they aren't interested or willing to produce the type of deliverable that we'll need. But my hope would be that it's a up to. It's not, we're going to give them $40,000. We're going to try and find a pathway that works for us and them. And to speak to a couple of Alderman Padraig O'Leary's concerns, I do want to share that this is the type of content and information that I seek out in terms of perspectives on municipal development, on why a particular place is extraordinarily successful and another place seems to founder over a long period of time. This is a unique organization. The message that they're sharing is not a, is not one that's particularly common. And so that's why Strong Towns, is because I do think they are, I do think they have a unique niche in this larger marketplace of what do we do. And your other concern in terms of how does this impact our values and our planning and our long-term strategic thinking, I see this type of visit and what we learn by exposing ourselves to these perspectives, these different ways of doing things, as the critical component to actually starting to reconsider and think really in-depth about our values. I think these are the conversations, and when I have heard these guys at the Main Street Summit, that is what they have triggered in me, is a desire to reevaluate our values and think about our values, and then put those values into practice. So I do see this type of organization, and what I have heard from them in the past as being a strong complement to our, I think, very urgent and necessary visioning organizational values, strategic planning for the city, for what it's worth. I just wanted to share that with you, because I think they are legitimate concerns, and I think, you know, if these guys end up here, you would see that the same response, I guess.
Alderman Janser, does that answer your question?
So Mr. Zakian is going to solicit a proposal, and we're going to then look at it and decide if we spend any money? Is that how this is going to work? it and decide if we spend any money? Is that how this is going to work?
I think that's kind of how we see it. We're going to have to say, please reach out to these guys and see what they think, and we'll go from there.
Mayor Sitma, if I could.
Mr. Zakian.
What I'm hearing is that, well, I'll tell you what I'm going to do, very quickly. If you approve this motion, I will reach out to New Towns. I'm going to basically tell them what I told you tonight. There is interest in a proposal from them based on a concept of rethinking how we promote economic resilience in Minot as a result of trying to rebuild from the flood. Initial and primary focus has to be on the downtown and the Oak Park commercial area, but it can also be done in the context of a citywide overview. And then I will give them a list of things that they can't do because they've already been done. I will then ask them for, within the framework of what a sub-recipient proposal has to be, I'll ask them for a proposal with a set of deliverables, a proposed budget, timeframe for that budget, methodology for getting paid. And if I get all that, then I'll be back to you at the next council meeting with that, and then you'll review that and either thumbs up or thumbs down. If it's a thumbs up, then that will be then translated into a sub-recipient agreement.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the confusing thing for myself, I think maybe for Alderman Janser as well, was the inclusion of $40,000 budget. I don't think that any dollar amount needs to be defined at this point. I think if I'm getting a bid to replace the roof of my house, I'm not going to tell them I have $10,000 to pay, because the bid's going to be $10,000. So I think removing any kind of dollar amount at this point and moving forward, that would be the most appropriate.
I'd look to Mr. Zakian on some of these, because they may be looking for scope as well, because some of these could be hundreds of thousands of dollars and some could be less. Mr. Zakian, I'd look for maybe a little.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Pittner, it is a good point. There's currently available that either is not spent, committed, or is in the process of being committed. There is probably a balance of around, as Alderman Wolfsky pointed out in his communication, about $60,000. So if you take out a dollar amount, I already know what the range will be, and I will basically tell them what the range is. Part of this process to address your quite apt, appropriate comment, Alderman Pittner, is that they're going to have to, remember, magic words, everything they give us is going to have to be necessary and reasonable and justified. So they can't just think that they've got a $20,000 or $40,000 or $60,000 budget. Whatever they come back with, they're going to have to show me that it's justified based on what they're proposing to deliver.
I'd look to the motion maker in the second, I guess, for clarification on the dollar amount.
So I will just share that the basis of the $40,000 was an expectation that a site visit was probably in the range of $5,000 to $8,000 plus travel costs. My presumption was, and my intent was, that these folks would come back to town, let's say, every six months over a 24-month period, or somewhere in that range. So the idea being that there is sort of a give and take. There is an exposure to an idea, then there is an opportunity to go do some things and evaluate and learn and experience. And so that was the reason for the $40,000. But to see this advance forward tonight, I would very happily remove the $40,000 condition. We know that we are working with somewhere between 0 and 60, and the circumstances are, I think, perfectly clear inside of that.
Does the second agree?
Agree.
Okay. Further questions or discussion on the motion that is before us? Alderman Padugula?
Yeah, before I can support this, I'd like to hear Mr. Zakian's information about what he knows about Strong Towns, and also Mr. Billingsley's information about Strong Towns. Again, I'm a little concerned that we reach out to one particular group. I'm sure Josh has looked at them, he's listened to the presentation, maybe some of the rest of you listened to their presentations, but I'm a little concerned about just kind of unilaterally picking one organization out.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padugula, to be honest, I have checked out their website. That's about all I do know about them. I do know that they do work outside the, but then it's consistent with what their stated mission is on their website. They do work outside of the traditional economic development profession, which is not to say that their ideas don't have merit. The reason I'm comfortable, going back to the heart of your question, Alderman Padugula, is that the reason I'm comfortable with just authorizing me to have a discussion is, this is the standard dynamic between a grantee and a potential nonprofit. Basically, tell us what you can do for us, and do it as specifically, and with clarity and with justified dollar amounts that is consistent with our action plan, and that's what I'll be going after. Again, picking up on what you're basically asking, when it comes to a sub-recipient agreement, the grantee, it's at their discretion if they want to pursue a particular nonprofit or a group of nonprofits. So this is totally, if this passes tonight, this is totally appropriate and consistent. Your expectation of me is to make sure that I come back to you, answers all your questions, as well as the other questions of the other Aldermen, and that I can stand here before you and say this is consistent with the NDR action plan, consistent with the scope of this planning money, and that the cost they propose is necessary and reasonable and meets the HUD standards for that.
Mr. Billingsley.
Good evening, Mayor Sitma and Alderman Padugula. I am familiar with Strong Towns. I listened to Mr. Marone give a presentation at a conference about five years ago, so I do not know him personally, I've never worked with him. They are an organization, they've written several books, they have done a lot of speaking engagements. I'm not aware of any conference plans or strategic plans that have been written by this group. That's my only familiarity with Strong Towns. But they are a very popular topic in the planning industry right now.
But are they a reputable topic?
Are they reputable? They actually have a very, they're a very different approach to planning, where they promote, they really promote infill development, they promote higher-density developments, they promote developments that are sustainable, that can pay for themselves throughout the years. So they're an outside-of-the-box type of organization, not typical of what you see from most typical planning firms. But yeah, they're a young organization. I don't know how long they've been around, but I don't have any objection to them coming to Minot. But like I said, they are a different type of organization. I'd recommend that you take a look at their website and make a decision for yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Alderman Olson, I apologize, I've got two monitors that typically obstruct my view of your hand when you raise it here. So Alderman Olson.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that I can support this tonight, because I kind of sense that this is the tail wagging the dog. We're asking for an answer to a question we haven't asked.
Exactly.
I agree with Alderman Padugula that we've had a discussion about strategic planning. We haven't had the opportunity to do strategic planning. I would like this body to do that first, and then perhaps Strong Towns is the organization that we would bring in to answer some questions for us. But tonight, I can't support this, because I don't even know what we're going to ask them to do.
Any further discussion on the motion? Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess from my standpoint, I attended the Main Street Summit a couple of years ago, so I saw Strong Towns at that time. And it's obviously no surprise, I think Governor Burgum is an outside-the-box thinker, is a successful businessman, and maybe that's why I wanted, and I was energized by the discussion. And I also think that I can appreciate if the direction of the council wants to go towards strategic planning and use these dollars just for strategic planning, then that so be it. But if we're going to have a discussion about economic development and resiliency within the community, let's remember that it's the community that also needs to be engaged and involved. And this is where I think, and I've said it multiple times before, where government is the ultimate just cog. Because I can appreciate Dr. Padugula saying, I'm not comfortable, I don't know them. To your point also, you said you don't want to study it anymore. At some point, we just have to kind of trust. And I'm not going to go, with everything Governor Burgum says, but on this particular topic, with this particular organization. Sometimes we just have to try something different, and this is an opportunity. And I think if we don't go that route, sometimes we're going to be just hammered for a council that sits around and talks and doesn't do anything.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I can appreciate all the comments and the perspectives and the reservations with, moving forward with this one particular firm. But right now, I feel like maybe a mountain out of a molehill situation a little bit. We're not asking, we're not writing a check tonight. We're just asking a question. We're asking to get some paper and some proposals. We can do that, we can look at it, and we can have the discussion on cutting a check later. So I can support this tonight and see what the individuals have to say, what the organization has to say, what they can offer. And maybe they come to us and say, hey, what you guys want isn't something that we can do for you? Here's another organization to look at. And maybe this will, and I guess, I don't know what the timeline is on strategic planning in this body, but maybe looking to the private sector to help us kickstart that and get us moving in that direction. I can be supportive of that. We're not spending any money with this motion, we're just asking for information, and I'll welcome it.
Alderman Padugula.
I feel more reassured with the modification of the motion, we're not going to be spending any money. But before I can vote to spend any money, I really do want some vetting of these people. I just, it sounds like an inspirational speaker, okay? I'll be very frank with you. And my experience as a psychologist is that gives you a momentary high, gives you a rush, but you need behavior change. And sometimes that can be a good stimulus, it can be a catalyst toward that. And I like the idea, I really like the idea of what I'm hearing here about them being outside the box and being non-traditional. I think we need to open ourselves up for that. I think Shannon's absolutely right with that. But I would like to know a little bit more about them. I have no problem with us going to them and saying, hey, look, we've heard some things that make it sound like you might be able to help us. I'm fully on board with that. But I really do want to know a little bit more about that. And hopefully they'll spell that out in their prospectus or whatever, because I'm concerned about just picking one out of the hat when there are others out there. And I'm relying on the two people with economic development and planning expertise to give us their professional judgment. I'm necessarily, not necessarily going to agree with it, but I want that judgment. I'm not satisfied with me scrounging around on some website, I'm sorry. You know? So I'm okay, I will vote to support going ahead. I could see this potentially being very good, but I really want to feel more comfortable about this organization. This is strategic planning in a sense, not in a sense, it is strategic planning, looking at these options, and it will broaden our horizons. I really like that about it. But I'm not ready to sign off on any money until I know more about them and see a range of options. When we typically ask for some service, we put something out for bill. It's a competitive process, I'm not sure we need to post this somewhere. But I think we need to have that kind of a range of options to choose from. This may turn out to be the best one. And again, I like the fact that they're somewhat non-conventional, but I really would like to know some more about them. And again, the hope is they will provide that information. So I'm willing to support that if we get rid of the money amount right now, and if these questions are answered when they come back, which I hopefully, I hope they will.
Further discussions on the motion for a proposal? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one other thing to that point, I think that's why I'll give a shameless plug to something that I've tried to bring on board as far as an economic development position. I know it's not the time to be hiring one right now with what's going on in COVID, and it may not be the time. But to have a liaison, so we don't have to maybe look to these organizations, and we can have kind of a pulse on those things moving forward, and have someone that can see these presentations and bring them back to the city and kind of be a sounding bar. That's, again, I think we're moving in the right direction, I think this is all part of that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is a request for a proposal with other details. And a second by Alderman Straight, motion by Alderman Wolfsky, please call the roll.
Wolfsky?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Motion approved. That takes us to item eight on personal appearances. I would look to our city clerk to see if there is any submitted through the portal. Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, are you moving to item nine now?
I was just going to go through on any verification of any other issues that had been brought up through personal appearances.
There was nothing submitted.
Okay. Then I would look to item nine. If we do have a tremendous amount, I might look to maybe look for a motion to push this until after the executive session. But if it's going to be short, Alderman Straight then?
Mr. Mayor, may I request that you kindly ask for an update coming from your office and your station from the One Brand campaign for the public, please, at the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I do have an update.
Alderman Olson.
Each time you ask, it's always on my phone. All right, so I did receive this today from Ryan Kuhn. It says, "The Minot One Brand effort continues to move forward. The three partner organizations, Visit Minot, the Minot Area Development Corporation, the Minot Area Chamber of Commerce, along with support from the city of Minot, are meeting regularly. As mentioned in the last liaison report, they had made a few adjustments to the original plan due to COVID-19, including pushing back the original April launch. The group is mindful of the current environment and is currently focused on outreach to other community organizations and partners. The community will start seeing signs of the work the group has done this summer. Now more than ever, coming together and speaking with one voice is so important for our community."
Thank you, Alderman Olson. And I was trying to actually pull through my memory resources on where that last update had come from, and thank you. Any other items? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Shame on all of you, except for Alderman Straight, for wearing your census shirt. We're still trying to get this done. I appreciate Alderman Straight wearing his shirt. I was able to remember to wear mine. Please, to the citizens of Minot, and the state, and the country, take your census. This is just as important, if not more important, than voting. It's something the founding fathers gave to us, it's something that's done every 10 years, and we only get a chance every 10 years to do it. And it's a way to be heard and a way to be seen in our community, and it plays a big part in funding that we receive for schools, for roads, for infrastructure, everything. So again, please take your census. It takes 10 minutes, and it's very easy to do, and it's a right that's afforded to us as citizens. So please.
Thank you, Alderman Pittner, and I will be sure at our next meeting to wear mine. Rather than calling up Mr. Billingsley, as he had sent out an email here, just quickly, Minot for the June 1 census percentage, 63.1 of the respondents have sent theirs back in comparison. If we want to maybe look to our sister city to the south, Bismarck, they're at 73.7 on their respondents that were sent out. Fargo is at 63.4, looks to Jamestown, 70.3. We are ahead of quite a few of the other western North Dakota cities. But again, as Alderman Pittner pointed out, the more respondents that we have, the greater impact that it is on a holistic level for the community, not just to become an entitlement community, but for all of the other benefits that having that greater number, the actual number means to this community. Any other items for miscellaneous discussion before we move forward? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 10. The next item on our agenda is the executive session for the following legal matters: city manager contract termination, the legal authority for closing this portion of the meeting in North Dakota Century Code Section 44-04-17.1, 44-04-19.1, and 19.2. The topical purpose of this executive session is for an attorney consultation and discussion of potential litigation strategy and/or guidance for negotiation strategy and instructions. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss the next topic in the executive session rather than in an open meeting. It's there, a motion.
So moved.
Motion is made by Alderman Janser. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfsky?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion carried. The executive session will be recorded, and all members of the governing body are reminded to limit their discussion during the executive session to the announced topic. Any collective decision, collective commitment, or other final action by the governing body must occur after it reconvenes in open meeting unless final action is specifically required by law to be taken during the executive session. The prohibition on taking final action during the executive session does not apply to providing guidance or instructions to our attorney or negotiator. We will now ask the members of the public and the media who are attending to